I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is November 3rd, 2021. I will begin with a note that two commissioners are present today. Commissioner Githens and myself, Commissioner Jones is out of town. And we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county's public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we'll move on to our proclamation. Commissioner Githens?
Yes, and I'm trying to get that pulled up too. It's nothing that's working today with my, with my computer. This is for National Runaway Month. And we know that the future, this is proclamation for National Runway Prevention Month. And we know that the future well-being of our nation is dependent on the value we place on our young people. And the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, which studies showing that every year 4.2 million individuals ages 13 to 25 endure some form of homelessness. We want to work on that. And we, and within our own county, think that this is an important issue. Therefore, and we'll post this on our website, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, by virtue of this authority invested in us, to hereby proclaim November 2021 as National Runaway Prevention Month.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And we're very grateful for the work of the good folks at the Service Bureau and all of their hard work throughout the year, not just in November. And now we will move on to department updates. And we'll begin with the Health Department and Ms. Cottle.
Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
All right. For some reason, my camera's not working. I guess I broke it. So it doesn't matter. You can, you can hear what I have to say. Last week, we had lots of people who were overly excited about that blue metric, even though we were still in a yellow advisory. And we cautioned everyone to be pleased, but not to get too excited and jump ahead of the regulations and the numbers and that there may be some seesawing up and down of numbers. And that is true. That has appeared to be true. This week, we will remain in yellow advisory and we will have a yellow metric as well. So we, there is another county, there is still one lone county in Indiana that has that blue metric for the week. Our cases per 100,000 were at 121. So we did see a big increase in this past week. Hopefully, people will remain cautious and those numbers will come back down. What that means to us in terms of our regulation is that our regulation to wear masks when in public and to wear them in schools will remain in effect. And it, we will have to be in this current advisory for at least two more weeks, right? We have to drop and be there two weeks before that would drop. So we're looking at a minimum of two weeks, probably several weeks before we reach that goal that is in that regulation. So just want to make sure people understand this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. We will get there if we work together at getting vaccinated, taking safety precautions. And that's especially important as we move forward into the winter months. Colder temperatures drive us inside where things are a little tighter and we're not in that outdoor space that's safer. The exciting news today is on the vaccine front. The CDC ASAP Committee met yesterday and they were actually scheduled to meet today as well. I'm sure they're still meeting. But they, yesterday, they gave full approval for the five to 11-year-olds. So I have to tell you, we weren't expecting that to come until maybe tonight. So that's kind of pushed everything up a little bit, but it is good news. We will be putting our plans into action. We do have to get directions from the state Health Department. Vaccines got to arrive and those kinds of things. The shipment for vaccine is kind of coming in waves. And so people, wherever you were getting those vaccinations, it's going to be important to understand that it may take a few days or a week or so to kind of get full shipments in. So call, make an appointment. The state's ourshot.in.gov will not be set up until tomorrow, is my understanding, to make appointments for the five to 11-year-olds. However, the state does have their mobile clinic that was extended at Indianapolis Motor Speedway. And they are, we just hot off the press, got that press release. And they are open on a walk-in basis today from four to eight at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. And people can get that vaccine today. Otherwise, they will need to kind of wait until tomorrow to start scheduling those appointments using ourshot.in.gov. We do have two kind of open clinics. We've partnered with our schools. We'll be sending out a press release about this. But we will have a clinic at Edgewood Primary and one at Bloomington High School South that will be open to any five to 11-year-old. So it won't matter where you go to school, but you'll be able to go there. And then our nurses are also working with the individual school systems to schedule school clinics, just like we've been doing this fall with flu vaccines and our other COVID vaccines. And then, you know, that's kind of the convenience, right, is going to the schools and letting that happen. If you want a unique experience, certainly the Indianapolis Motor Speedway could be that unique experience. But there are other options as well. We have requested a mobile clinic to come and they will have all vaccines. So they would cover, you know, a family maybe that wanted to come and hadn't been vaccinated yet. They'll also be able to do testing when they come. I don't have exact dates for that yet. That should be mid-month and we will share that information as soon as we get confirmation for that coming. Certainly pharmacies will be able to schedule your appointment. And then if you have a routine exam scheduled, a well-child visit scheduled for your child, then you can talk to your healthcare provider about getting it while you're there. So there are options. Do please remain patient as we have lots of people getting boosters. We have a new eligibility group. So just remain patient and we will get everybody vaccinated that wants to. And then when we get through this, if we feel like we need to set up some additional mass clinic sites, we will certainly do that. So those are the things in terms of vaccine. And if you are a parent and have questions about the vaccine, Dr. Erin Carroll, who's the IU's Chief Health Officer, every Wednesday does a session, a webinar, Ask Erin. And this week, and that's at noon, this week he is focusing on child vaccines for children. So he is focusing on your questions about the COVID vaccine for your children. So I would encourage you to tune into that today if you have questions. And it's always available after the fact as well. So you can always go back and visit it if you need to. And finally, I would just say, you know, we are coming into a time of year where we focus more on maybe being thankful, about being more giving and hopeful. And I, my hope is that everyone will practice grace for these next few months and forever, honestly, but be kind, do your part regardless of your personal opinion. Just be nice. Do what you can to end this pandemic and the need for the regulations that we've had to have. Vaccinate and if you can't or won't get vaccinated, at least wear your mask as required and requested. And follow all of the precautions to keep yourself and those around you safe.
That's it. Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there are comments and questions. Commissioner Githens?
Well, once again, flu shots are available. So please also get those when you're going to go get your COVID shots or if you've already had whatever your full vaccination is, please just go get your flu shot. We were so fortunate last year to not have a flu outbreak, basically, so.
Yes, absolutely. And you can get them at the same time. There is no need to separate the, the two vaccinations. You can get them on the same visit as long as you were somewhere that can give you both, right? That has both of them available for you. You can get them that same day and it is very, very important. Thank you for reminding us of that.
Yeah, and I imagine that at some point in the near future, our vaccination percentage is going to change because of this new population group being added. Should we anticipate that?
Yes, and it will be interesting because so will our eligible populations. So we'll, yes, we will see quite a swing. I have, I'm sure our percentage will, I would anticipate it going up, but so will the eligible people. So I don't know how that will shake out, but we will definitely be watching it.
Yeah, and the testing site on Profile Parkway is still operating?
It is still operating and that is at 500 North Profile Parkway. No appointment necessary. They are still planning to move inside and working on that location for that. So hopefully, I, I hope to hear that they are moving inside soon because we know that the weather is getting more unstable and that can affect whether or not they are able to be open. But Tuesday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is their regular hours.
Great. Thank you so much for all of the information and the updates and sharing the good news about the new population eligible for vaccine. This is great news.
It makes for a good spring semester, right? The students can be much safer.
That will be good. Yep. And hopefully even safer holidays if we can get the vaccines out quick enough.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Next, we will turn to Ms. Petroline and Emergency Management.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, everyone in Monroe County. You know, I'm really happy to look outside my window and see sun because last week I felt like we were just constantly looking at rain. So it's just nice to see that sunshine makes me a little happier. First off, of course, we talked about the blood drives. We actually have one going on today and it started at 10:00. So it was just a few minutes ago and it goes till 3:00 today. And I checked just before I came on camera and we still have two time slots available at 2:00 and 2:15. So if you get a little wild hair and you feel like giving some blood today, go onto our website, co-monroe.in.us and click on that date and you can go ahead and sign up for that appointment. That one is at the Northwest YMCA. And so is the next one that's on November 5th and that is actually from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And again, both those are at the Northwest YMCA. We do have some scheduled for December. Those are scheduled for December 16th and that is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then Friday, December 17th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Now, I do want to put a disclaimer out there. They are set to be at the Monroe County Convention Center, but I was told that that is a to-be-determined location. So hopefully, we'll find out the next week and I'll pass that information along to the necessary parties and we can announce that as needed. So please sign up for giving some blood. And secondly, just a reminder again, but I love to remind everyone, sign up for those county alerts. That megaphone's right on our front page. Click on it. Put all that information in there so you can get the most accurate information as quickly as possible. Again, that goes with different weather events, COVID-related incidents, travel advisories. Just make sure you sign up and make sure your neighbors and family and friends are signed up. Last but not least, I know it's a new month, so everybody's wondering what I'm going to talk about. But I thought with the holidays coming about, we talk about cooking safety. Now, I, I was kind of thinking about this and I have yet to find a holiday that anyone celebrates that doesn't revolve around food. So I thought this would become important. But you can go onto the Emergency Management page and there's just a list of 10 different things to think about. So making sure you're not wearing any loose clothing while you're cooking. Making sure those pot holders are kind of farther away when you have something on the stove that's cooking. And just making sure your kids and your pets are away from the general area. But I won't go through all 10 of them, but just go ahead and get onto the Emergency Management website and check out all those little tips. And that is all I have for today. Thank you so much for having me.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I just want to remind people that they can donate blood as often as every eight weeks. So please get out there.
Yeah, good reminder. Excellent. Thank you so much. And next we have an update from Ms. Ridge in Highway. Good morning.
Good morning. So we're still working on winter operations coming up, getting the trucks ready. We usually have the guys, the plows on, run the routes. That way, if they have any questions on what roads we do and what we don't maintain, they have snowplow training next week. And it's my understanding that community crossing awards will be announced today. So we have our fingers crossed, hoping for the eight roads that we submitted will be funded. So I will let you guys all know as soon as I hear anything, so.
Right, and good luck. And I know that you've put in a great application and we're very excited and hopeful that we'll be successful again. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I was going to say, if you hear, wow, our meeting's still going on, please break in. Well.
Such good, always, always been good news. Let's hope it continues that way. All right, great. Thank you so much. And next on our agenda, we have our time slot for public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. Just as with our regular agenda items, the time allotted is three minutes. At 2:30, you will hear a tone.
It will be a tone here shortly.
Okay.
It's going to be a minute. Sorry. I apologize. I'm having some technical difficulties again.
Okay, well, there will be a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your final comments. And, and when you hit three minutes, you'll hear that tone again. And we appreciate the work of Ms. Dayton to keep this going. But remember, this is for public comment for items not on our agenda. And it looks like we have a couple of folks who are wanting to comment. Let me get there. Jim Shelton? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber. We're speaking again on behalf of Court of Pointers Special Abicentor Casa. Casa had now scheduled their 2022 trainings. The next training will start on February 2nd and run through the 28th. We right now have some 21 children on our waitlist. This is a very good volunteer opportunity. It can be very satisfying. I just had a case closed last Wednesday, probably while you were meeting. Judge Galvin signed the order that ended that case. The little four-and-a-half-year-old guy was reunited with his parents. It was a three-and-a-half-year struggle for them to overcome their addiction, but they did it with the help of Casa and DCS and a wonderful grandmother and grandmother to the, to the little boy. And they're back together and we're all out of their lives and hopefully they will continue on. So this is the kind of satisfaction you get after putting in some three years' work with them. And you too can do this. You can help the children get back to a safe, permanent situation, hopefully with their parents, but if not into an adoptive situation. So please think about this. I know that applications won't be due till the middle of January, but with the holiday distractions, that'll be here before you know it. So you can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link and you'll find a frequently asked question page that'll give you some details. You can also download or fill out online the application and go ahead and submit it. And we will have people doing that all along now between now and February. So thank you for the opportunity to shed that word. And I hope if you know anybody who you think would be a good Casa, you'll tell them this info. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Jim Shelton, we appreciate you. Next, we have Joe Myers. If you could verify your name and let us know if you're a Monroe County resident, please.
Yes, this is Joe Myers. I am a Monroe County resident. And I am the author of the failed attempt petition to rezone the Wormsley property, REZ 21-3. And I kind of feel like I've learned a lot in the last few months trying to go through this process, kind of by being back at school. And going through the process, it looked like I was going to receive a passing grade. And then things, you know, with, when we had a seven to zero approval from the Planning Commission and then it was completely reversed and went a three against, three zero against by the Commissioners. And I want to continue my education and learn from the Commissioners what it was that made this turnaround possible because I think it would be educational for myself and for other individuals in the future that wish to do a rezone. I will surrender the rest of my time to the Commissioners.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. I don't know, Commissioner Githens, if you want to respond? We don't have to. We can do this over email or something else, but you're welcome to.
I think that it, that we do care about the individuals that, that live in the community and we do respond to input from all sides. So that was, that was what influenced me in my decision.
Yeah, I was actually hopeful that the community, the neighborhood in that area would appreciate that. And I'm not saying that right, that they would have been okay with the petition. And really, it was up to them because they're there and they've been there. But, you know, because I appreciate and I know that you worked hard to come up with the revisions that were needed, the recorded commitment that was needed to limit the use on the property. But it really was going to be what their input was that was going to be important. And I, and they, they had seen the revisions and they still had, I think, valid concerns. So we appreciate your hard work on this. I'm sorry it didn't go your way. You know, there's always, with planning cases, there are always people who are unhappy with the outcome. Understandably so, and there are tough decisions to make. But we, we do listen to the community and we listen to all the folks who have put time and effort into the petition as well. So, all right, next we will turn to Guy Loftman. Just verify that this is you and that you are a Monroe County resident.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. My name is Guy Loftman. I am a Monroe County resident. And in fact, yesterday late, I sent a suggestion to you all on election administration needs. But I, I'd like to just take a minute and, and, and read it. So I've said it to you directly and maybe it'll go someplace. I call it Election Hub 2023. Number one, no changes would be made for the 2022 election cycle. There isn't enough time to make changes before that process is underway. Temporary changes would add confusion and waste time and money. Two, all election administration resources would be consolidated at the Johnson Hardware Building prior to the municipal election in May 2023. The entire building would be dedicated to election purposes, including voter registration, early voting, vote counting, machine operations, preservation of ballots from prior elections, et cetera. Three, an assessment of needed building upgrades would begin immediately, including structural sufficiency, security, backup power, information technology, et cetera. Four, existing non-election uses in the building would be moved to new locations sufficiently prior to the 2023 election to allow for all needed upgrades and moving in of election supplies, equipment, records, and personnel. Election Hub 2013 addresses serious problems. Our election administration is spread among at least five locations. This is inevitably inefficient and a potential source of confusion and error. But we need to recognize that there are unprecedented forces seeking to disrupt and discredit the voting process. The fact that Monroe County is often a blue dot in a sea of red makes it an attractive target. In 2024, we may be the Maricopa County of Indiana. Fortunately, the Republican and Democratic Parties in Monroe County have a long and unbroken record of joint commitment to free and fair elections. But forces from outside of the county may well already have us in their sights. We should consolidation in one location is a critical step in that process. Election security is one of the most fundamental responses of the county, responsibilities of the county. It is time to act. And I, this, this proposal has the support of Clerk Brown and several other community groups that I've presented it to. Thank you so much. I hope that this will be on the agenda soon.
Great. Thank you, Guy. We look forward to reading through your proposal. Thank you so much. Next, we have Ruth. If you could verify your name and let us know if you're a Monroe County resident. I think you are.
Yes, I am. My name is Ruth. I, I am speaking as a Monroe County voter and as a concerned citizen. I want to voice my appreciation and strong support for the unwavering dedication and leadership of Clerk Brown. I have seen Clerk Brown do everything in her power to ensure that all Monroe County voters can safely cast their ballots and to ensure that every ballot is handled and counted properly. She has done this in the face of many hurdles, some foreseeable and some not. I thank Clerk Brown for communicating to the Commissioners what is needed to conduct upcoming elections in accordance with best practices. While I understand that you have multiple issues on your plates, I urge you to prioritize Clerk Brown's requests so that the fundamental right to vote and to have confidence in the election results can be assured without requiring superhuman efforts on the part of Clerk Brown and her staff. Again, my sincere thanks to Clerk Brown for all she does to serve voters in Monroe County. Her dedication and leadership is a model for government service. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Right. Thank you so much. And it looks like we don't have any other commenters. Just note for the record that we're trying to get a meeting scheduled as soon as possible to finish the working group and to move forward. We're awaiting the report from the Election Board, which we have not received yet. And we're looking forward to seeing where this goes and getting this moving as well. As you know, this has been something that we've spent a great deal of time on and we're happy to do so. But we, we're waiting to get that next meeting scheduled just for folks who are interested. All right, with that, let's move on to item six, please.
I move approval of the minutes from October 27th, 2021.
I will second that. Any comments, notes, corrections?
The corrections I sent in have been taken care of, so I appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Mr. Cottle, will you please call the roll on the approval of minutes, October 27th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Right. Thank you so much. And our next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable, November 3, 2021, and payroll, November 5, 2021.
I will second that, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. The total for claims was $3,295,848.21. $1,271,875 was for JP Morgan Chase Bank for aviation ban or bond anticipation note for the purchase of 55 acres adjacent to the airport. $372,465 was for Capstone Title Partners for Hunter Valley Road Property Acquisition. $352,178.44 was for Innkeeper's Tax Distribution for October. $152,150.99 was for Anthem Inc. for October claims and fees. And finally, for AP Claims, $100,948.84 was for Regal Inc. for the rehabilitation of bridge deck overlay on Bridge number 908 on Rogers Street over Indiana Railroad. Those make up the most notable items in the accounts payable. And as far as payroll, the total was $1,618,240.87. $1,140,851.70 or approximately 70.5% were for direct costs of payroll, remaining 29.5% or $477,389.17 were for the indirect costs.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you.
I don't have any either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Please raise your hand on the Zoom screen, star nine, if you're on the phone. I don't see any public comment on this item. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on accounts payable, November 3, 2021, and payroll, November 5, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will note for the record that we have received three reports. First is the Clerk of the Circuit Court report for September. We've also received the Treasurer's report for September. And lastly, the Waits and Measures Report that runs September 16 to October 15, 2021. And we will move on to new business. And our first item is a discussion point or a discussion item related to precinct and district boundary advisory committee review. And Mr. Cockrell, if you could tell us all about it, that'd be great.
Well, I will, but I'll start off with telling you that this is, this is a recommendation from our precinct and boundary committee. And that committee members Regina Moore and Hal Turner are on this call in the audience, as well as key staff Karen Wheeler and Jared Ike and Miller. So if you have questions, they would probably be as good, if not better, people to answer them. But this committee started meeting, it seems like yesterday, but it's been probably about a month now. And so we've, they've looked at the precincts as they are. They've looked at what's non-contiguous and they've looked at annexation items. And so I kind of will go through what they've recommended as far as a current precinct change. I will also let you know that they voted to recommend that because we've had such a short timeline, that a precinct committee with two members from each major party be reestablished in, for the changes for the election in 2024. So that, you know, they've scratched the surface. I think they were looking at issues and given that the state wanted these changes by next Friday, they didn't have time to do all the work again. We knew this was a compressed schedule. It was, it's a six-month project that, you know, essentially got narrowed down to six weeks at best. And so I'm going to go through what they've recommended and then, and I think for today and the next week, we bring it back for a formal authorization to submit this to the State of Indiana Election Division. So on, we're looking at what's titled Map One, and that should be on the screen of everyone.
Yes.
These are the changes, the, the green boxes are actually split census blocks. And the pink is, is another block. All these were annexed by the city of Ellisville, or town of Ellisville, and therefore need to be in a town of Ellisville precinct. And so that we were going to transfer all these to the, to the Richland Two block, which is a, which has, includes the Ellisville town limits. So they are being transferred from a county-only block to a town of Ellisville block. Can we go to the next map? This is essentially the same situation, although it's going to a different town of Ellisville, but town of Ellisville annexes that highlighted block. And so that, that's the second recommended, recommended change. Can we go to the next map, please? This was in a city, this Perry, the, what the pink area is within a city voting precinct right now. And it is being asked to be moved into a county voting precinct that is not within the city limits. Historically, we believe this was included in the city because of the State House District. And that would have reflected the State House District at the time. That has been changed. It's moving further north. And so we think putting this in a district where it has the same ballot makes a lot of sense. The, actually, for this one, the voting site is still going to be the, the school there, the Jackson Creek School. So there won't be any material change as to where anybody would go to vote on Election Day for this district. We go to the next map, please. This is one where we looked, where the committee looked at a, a line that basically bisected a housing area. I think that's a trailer park, mobile home park. And so the committee looked at moving just one of the two precincts or census blocks, excuse me, I, which had all, which had most of the housing to the, to, from Bloomington 17 to Bloomington 14. When we reviewed that and looked at the bigger map, the committee decided that since pretty much the entirety of Bloomington 14, or the majority of Bloomington 14 was below that State Road 45, 46 bypass, and the majority of the block 17 was above. Adding that second precinct back block, which is the one that runs along the roadway and includes very few voters, made it look more geographic, geographically sound. And so their recommendation would be to make that transfer of those two blocks from Bloomington 17 to Bloomington 14. Can I go to the next map, please? This was a line that the precinct line actually cut through a building. And so the, they recommend moving that block all the way to the State Road 46, including that entire census block. There are no people living in that census block other than in the split building. And if you looked, if we had the expanded prior map, that, that, that area was just kind of a, almost looked like an add-on to the Bloomington Eight. And it had really no, no voters in it. So it also would make that State Road 46 bypass kind of a clean line as well and make more geographic sense. Can we go to the next slide? This is a much more interesting one, in my opinion. This item was in Perry Four, which is non-contiguous. It was put in Perry Four because that used to be the State House line. And so the thought was to move it from Perry Four, which is non-contiguous county precinct, to Perry 23, which would then be a contiguous Perry, or contiguous precinct, is the recommendation. The voting site will change for this, but it will change to a area that is actually closer to where these people live. I think they, they will go to a Jackson Creek Middle School, which is basically the next area on the map that's not there on the east. And so that change is recommended, recommended so that we have a contiguous precinct and we get rid of the non, and resolve that issue. Could we go to the next map? And finally, these three areas were annexed by the town of Ellisville. They are in Bean Blonsom Township. So the recommendation is to create a new Bean Blossom Township that would have the Ellisville Incorporated areas in it. There are not a lot of current voters in this area, but the, but that could change. And I think having that in place now makes, the committee found made a lot of sense. Those were the seven changes. I think there is one more page on this. Can we? And here are kind of the, we looked at all the non-contiguous ones. And, and here is kind of the reasoning behind why they were the ones that weren't, that weren't changed. And typically, if not all of them, was due to annexations or municipal boundaries. And so that is, that's, was essentially the reasons for the rest of the, of the non-contiguous precincts. So I think that is the report. I hope I explained it well. And again, if I did not, feel free to have some of the others who really worked on this, especially Jared. I would, I would like to point out that everybody on the committee really appreciated Jared's work on this and found that it was extremely helpful. We have members on this committee who looked at precinct thing in their, in their past work and found that what Jared and our GIS system is able to do was extremely helpful and wished that we'd had it a long time ago.
I'm wondering if, if you or somebody who's on this, at this meeting from the committee could kind of give an overview of the timing and what's next as well. I don't know who can do that or who wants to do that. If it's somebody from the committee, just raise your hand.
I can do that, and I will tell you, I'm going to have two parts to it, right? From a precinct perspective, I think what, what we wanted to do is we wanted to get this on your agenda today, do a public presentation. If you have feedback, give us the feedback because we're, that, that committee is still going to meet every Thursday at two and every Monday at 11:00. And I'll get to why in the second part of my, my answer. But once, we would go to you for formal approval to submit these changes to the state. The state will review it for compliance with their rules and regulations. Once that occurs, it would come back to this board for a formal order finalizing these precincts. This process can happen every year. So we want to, but we wanted to make sure we had it completed this time. Part two of that is that this is a precinct and district boundary committee. So the district boundary committee work is, is set to start in full force tomorrow. I think we actually talked about it quite a bit on Monday, but they're going to review that. They're hopeful to have a public process and they're working with, we're working with Jared and are counting on Jared to figure out how to make that work in the timeline we have so that the, they can get input from the public on, on drawing the district boundaries. The anticipation of that would be completed either at the end of November or very early in December, because we want to go through the same two-week process with the commissioners. Week one, a kind of overview like what we're doing today, and then week two for a formal approval. And we would like to get that done before all the holidays set in. And, and so people would be able to react and respond between those two items. So I, that's kind of the rough timeline on what we're looking at. The precinct, the state had indicated that we needed to get these up to them by the 12th, which is next Friday. And so we think this is the optimal timeline we could have, given that parameter.
Yeah, and all of this has been delayed because of the census delay because of COVID, which is why we started late and, and all of that. Commissioner Githens, do you have questions before we go back to Mr. Ike Miller or others on the committee or Ms. Wheeler?
Well, a couple, a couple of different things. If I heard you correctly, Mr. Cockrell, maps can be redrawn every year. Is that correct?
That's, the precincts can be drawn, redrawn every year. That's really not a best practice, but I think given the time constraint that we've had this year, I think the, the committee felt that it was important to do some of the deeper dives that they were starting to do, but just did not have time to complete. We were looking at active voter numbers in current precincts to see if they should be combined. We're looking at, we're beginning to look at, you know, we have these voting sites where we have multiple precincts voting at one site. I mean, does that make sense to make them one precinct? Those kind of questions that I think are still unresolved. I believe that the 20, by the 2024 election was, was discussed because of the potential of annexation and how that would play into it. There are some drawbacks to waiting that long in that if we, if we could do it earlier, then it would be more time for voter education. It wasn't ideal to make those kind of changes right before the presidential election, right? Because that, that is a, those are typically our highest voter turnout and they're also typically the most contested elections that we see. So there are some drawbacks to that. My, my thought, and this is purely mine and not of any of the committee members, is we should have a better feel for the annexation issue at early January. And, and maybe that would be a time to determine, hey, do we want to do it next year or the year after, depending on that if? And so I think, I understand what the, the committee made that recommendation and I understand why it's just, but they also recognized that there was that drawback.
So with these changes that are being recommended here, what's the impact on the number of voters in each precinct? Did it, did it equalize them more or did it make them more disparate? Do we know?
None of these changes were, were made to balance precinct numbers to be equal. We have statutory guidelines of essentially 600 to 2,000 is an appropriate number in each precinct. None of these changes pushed this over 2,000. Clearly, the Bean Blossom Three would, would be well under 600 voters at this point. However, it is to resolve a split ballot issue, which is in a, or a, you know, an annexation municipality boundary issue, which is an appropriate reason to go under the 600 voters. I mean, we have a township that is under 600 voters and that is a whole precinct. And, you know, because of the township boundaries, that is perfectly appropriate to do.
Well, I just wanted to thank you and the committee members, Joyce Pulling, Hal Turner, Regina Moore, and Ed Robertson for all this work. And also thank Mr. Ike Miller and Mrs. Wheeler. Clearly, everybody has really just been amazing to get this done this quickly and to have such detailed information to present to us. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I agree. And yeah, huge thanks to the committee. I wonder if the committee has anything to offer and then we can go to staff support as well. Any member of the committee have anything they want to add or provide additional information to us today? We appreciate you being on the call. Looks like we have one, but I don't see, ah, here we go. Hal Turner. Good morning. Oop, we muted. You are muted.
Got it. Okay. I just want to say, since I'm also a sitting member of the election board, that the impact of any changes we made or will make will also be measured against the yardstick of what effect this will have on voters. Will it make her, make it harder for people to vote, or will it make it easier? And we don't make that decision lightly. It's seriously discussed at every one of our meetings, which are open to the public. And we invite people to, to share in that deliberative process. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yes, there are so many considerations as you're moving through this process. And we appreciate that you, you're often having to weigh and balance different competing interests sometimes. Regina Moore? Good morning.
Oh, good morning. Thank you for allowing me to say a couple of words. This has been a wonderful experience, and I want to thank Jeff Cockrell, but especially Jared Ike Miller. He's just, he is a wizard. I tell him every meeting, he can do things almost as you, as you think of them. And Hal Turner, Joyce Pulling, wonderful people to work with, as well as Angie and Karen Wheeler. These changes that are before you this morning were some, some of the easier things. They were things that absolutely had to be done. But as we looked at them for the past three or four weeks, I think all of us have internalized them and understand them. So if you have questions about them, we can answer them. But I, I think, and also Jeff said that this, because of the compressed timeframe, this is something that I think you need to take another look at in the future with regards, of course, to the impact on voters, especially in the 2024 election. Being careful to not add confusion, et cetera, et cetera. But, but we're happy to, to help or advise or whatever, as long as you want us to be around, we'll, we'll do that. And, and we do take tons of things into consideration, including geographics, et cetera. But let us know what you need and, and thank you again for the opportunity. It's been a real great experience for me. Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for your service and for the other members of the committee. Amazing work. There is a lot to think about and a lot to work with. It's not as easy as it sounds at first blush. So Jared Ike Miller, did you want to add anything?
I think that Jeff described all of the recommended changes very, very well. And that with, if there are any questions about some of the kind of minor details about the history of why those might have come to be, yeah, please definitely reach out to me. I'm happy to answer any questions like that.
Right. Thank you so much. Karen Wheeler, I don't know if you're on the call still, but did you have anything you wanted to add?
Okay. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, I was having trouble to not even know if I could talk or not. So this is good. No, the committee was amazing. Jared was even more amazing. It's so wonderful when you really work together as, I mean, it isn't looking at Republicans or Democrats. It's looking at voters. It's looking at the best situation. And I think that the committee was totally successful, but maybe a little frustrated that they couldn't do all of what they wanted to do. But they absolutely did everything that they should have done because of the time constraints.
Right. I do have a quick question for you. There was the issue about numbering. Is that, has that been resolved? The like a 04, a 01, it was with Richland, I believe. Has that been addressed appropriately? Do you need to do something with that?
And do you?
This would have been an email that you'd sent, oh, probably two months ago about the problem with Richland and the numbering and not being consistent. I just want to make sure that we're consistent in the numbering with whatever we send to the state.
Yes. So there were, there were, some of the things were 01, Richland 01, and it should be just zero, should be, just be Richland 1. And because of what was said and done, that's all been changed and we're all on, right on schedule.
Okay. So even though we're seeing it in the, and that's, I think that's why I'm asking this question is when I look at these maps and the information that's on these maps, I see some 01s with, with Bean Blossom and Richland. And I just want to make sure that we're really careful about that numbering to make sure it's consistent, because it's not that way with the Bloomington list, for example.
That could.
Not minor detail, but it makes a huge difference.
It can, yes. And perhaps we can get GIS to change that. And that too is probably a little bit more Jared's expertise of making that just a 1 instead of a 01.
Right. And the same thing, there's a period 04, there's some other things that, perfect. Thank you so much. And Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, I would just want to add that the presentation that I gave, the, the material is found on our website. It's under both the recent news from November 2nd and under very important news tab. So, I mean, the goal was to get this in front of you today so that the public could be made aware and, and could give comments. So I just want to make sure everybody knows where to find that information.
Great. Thank you so much. And so we'll have this on their agenda next week, if you're okay with that, Commissioner Giffens. And if there is any members of the public who have any questions or comments, please either email them or as soon as possible, or plan to attend next week's commissioners meeting, because we are going to need to move forward at that time. And again, great, huge thanks to all of the support staff that helped with this and all of the committee members. And Mr. Cockrell, would you have anything you wanted to add?
I would just add that it might also be really helpful if, if they do still get it and have some questions that they, there is a precinct advisory, boundary, precinct and boundary advisory commission meeting tomorrow at 2:00 and Monday at 11:00. The Zoom link information for that is on our website.
Right. And the calendar on the homepage, co.monroe.in.us. Yes, even better. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to divert from our, our agenda just briefly. Ms. Ridge has some news for us. Drum roll.
Absolutely. So the governor just announced the community crossing awards. And Monroe County, we had submitted seven applications, actually eight roads for paving for 2022, and they were all awarded at a sum of $597,025.77. So that was actually, you're allowed to be awarded up to a million dollars. It's a 50/50 match. We were awarded a bridge for $407,000 in January calls, so that gave us the full million dollars for 2021. So we will put these roads out to bid as soon as possible. Start replacing the pipes so that they'll be ready to pave first thing in the spring. The next question is going to be what roads? Low Gap Road, Guthrie Road, Chapel Hill Road, Mount Carmel Road, Howard Road, Starnes Road, Wisnan Road, and Fish Road. So we are thrilled. So. And I, as you know, Ms. Ridge, I had somebody asking about Fish Road just, you know, the last week or so. So this is really good that we got, and Chapel Hill, I think we had some emails on Chapel Hill and Guthrie Road area. So we want, we do get some concern about low gap because it was paved at the north end through I-69 negotiations, we believe. So we're going to pave the south end of that to connect with Morgan County. So, yeah, so we're very excited, great group effort, putting applications together and getting the roads ready to submit. And so, yeah, we're thrilled.
Wow. Congratulations and thank you for all of your hard work and the staff. You all are amazing. You are amazing. And to get the million dollars again this year is unbelievable. I don't know that other counties are as fortunate as we are.
Thank you.
And it's more skill than fortune, I think. But thank you for that. Appreciate that you could report that. And, um, let's see. Okay. So now we'll go back to our agenda with that good news lightening our hearts a bit for the next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-35, Blackwell Rezone.
I will second that. Ms. Celia, from the planning department, tell us all about it, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So this is the final hearing for ordinance 2021-32. So this was a zoning map amendment or rezon request called Blackwell. So the property is located off of Carmola Drive. They are currently zoned agricultural rural reserve. And they are requesting to change the zoning to medium density residential. Let's see. So they're located in Richland Township. The intent of the zoning map change is a future subdivision. If this rezone is approved, that subdivision will be reviewed as a separate petition later on. So here are a couple of telemetry images of the property highlighted. So it is currently surrounded by multiple subdivisions. It's already an area that's zoned medium density residential. So it is kind of a, a last little inholding of acreage that's, that's zoned agricultural rural reserve. It's a 2.6 acre parcel surrounded by subdivision. The property formerly had a house on it that was demoed a year or so ago. So it's currently vacant. So a few more photos of the site from when staff did a site visit. You know, it's, it's wooded. Carmola Drive is expected to be improved in the future. So the photo on the right and on the right side, top and bottom, are images of Carmola Drive as it exists now. With this rezone petition, staff had recommended a commitment by the petitioner to provide some additional temporary right-of-way for that construction and improvements of Carmola Drive. The petitioners has gone ahead and has directed that document. It's been reviewed by county legal and the highway department and was recorded yesterday. So this area, according to the comprehensive plan, is identified as being in a rural community. That area would be, you know, the Elletsville area. The rural community land use plan has designated this area. If you can see on the screen, this here is Carmola Drive. So this area is considered neighborhood growth. This rezone request would be consistent with the description of neighborhood growth. So this is a conceptual design of the future subdivision. This area has had issues with drainage from the older subdivisions. So this conceptual design is exactly that. And if it is subdivided, it will be reviewed as a, a major subdivision petition with, you know, input and review by county stormwater and also highway. So they, this petition for the rezone, they did go ahead and just look at it at a drainage board meeting, knowing that they didn't have any formal comments by stormwater, but they are fully aware that there's drainage issues already in the area. So that if it is subdivided in the future, that will be paid attention and, and will have to be addressed then. This is a construction plan of the future improvements to Carmola Drive. So here we have the petition site in yellow, and we can see that this dotted line here is the future right-of-way. And then we have a larger temporary right-of-way shown that will be needed for construction. So Plan Commission in August recommended this to the county commissioners with a positive, a favorable recommendation of 8 to 0. It did have the requirement that the, that petitioner go ahead and record a written commitment dedicating that temporary right-of-way to the county for the future Carmola Drive improvements. So like I mentioned, it's been reviewed by legal and highway. It's been signed off on and was recorded yesterday. So I do have that document. I can pull up if you'd like to see it. I also forward it to the, to your emails just shortly, right before the meeting started. So staff recommends approval of this petition. And they've met that final condition now with the recorded commitment. So does anybody have any questions?
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Just the lot sizes, they're narrow and very, very deep. And I couldn't tell exactly because now, you know, my eyes are just, it was really blurry. How deep are those lots, you know? It just looked really long and narrow to me, but I'm, I'm not going to, that's not going to be what, what determines how I vote on this, okay?
Plenty of curiosity.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure I can find out and look a little closer. Okay. So this conceptual design is, it's the maximum amount of lots that they'd be able to get with, on, just under, just by acreage required for the zone under medium density residential. Kind of expect that this design will change, that they do submit that subdivision petition.
Yeah. This won't be, this won't be what they end up with, I think, but. Any other questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
And I don't have any either. Petitioner, petitioners representative wish to offer information to us? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right. See, none. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay. Any other comments from the public? A second to raise their hand on the Zoom screen. You don't have any callers today. Okay. See, none. Any final comments, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Right. I'm looking forward to seeing what ends up coming to, to forward with the, the actual plan. Obviously, this is just to rezone where it matches all of the surrounding zones. And for me, that makes a lot of sense. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on ordinance 2021-35?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 2 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and we'll see you in a moment. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-43, amend zoning ordinance chapters 801 and 807.
I will second that. We have Mr. Wilson from planning here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Okay. This is, if, if we could enable screen sharing, okay, we're, I think we're okay here. Okay. Again, this is ordinance number 2021, 2021-43. It's a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter 801, definitions in chapter 807, signs.
I'm sorry, excuse me a moment. There's no screen sharing going on yet.
Okay, hang on a second.
Thank you, just for the public.
Okay. Is that on there now?
No, it is not. I wonder if Ms. Nestor Jellin could share her screen maybe and help out here, because she just joined our panel. It's like something's going there. Here we go, yes. Great, thank you so much.
I'm sorry.
Now we do have it, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm having some apparently technical difficulties. Again, this is an amendment to chapter 801 definitions and chapter 807 signs. This was heard by the rural county plan commission and was certified to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation to approve by a vote of eight to zero at September 21st, 2021 Plan Commission Meeting. This is a hearing on the proposed ordinance as well as we are seeking passage of the ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is basically to amend the ordinance to read both the definitions and text of the sign chapter to address the recent decisions in federal courts regarding sign content. The intent is to remove all provisions which might be considered content based. There's a good example on commercial message, which we are just eliminating that provision because it requires you to look at the content of the sign. And throughout the definitions and throughout the sign ordinance, we have removed those provisions. Or amended those provisions to remove references which might be considered content based. It's a fairly technical amendment because it doesn't really change the overall impact of the ordinance from what our existing ordinance is regarding to signage. The only thing I will say is that our temporary signing Jordans have been amended somewhat. If we go to chapter 807, Jackie, at the end. There we go, stop right there. We'll hop higher. Okay, this, we have some changes here, which we basically have made some changes in regard temporary signs again to the address the content base requirement. And that we we are prohibited from regulating content. And we have removed the exemption for non-commercial signs. However, all temporary signs which meet the meet the criteria of being less than eight square feet and no less than 10 feet from either the signer's structure and are freestanding less than 10 six feet in height and with no external or eliminate external elimination are allowed on any zoning lot. There is a provision under A which says unless is controlled by a state statute, there is now an exemption or there is now a requirement under state code that basically new state statute that prohibits a unit from prohibiting temporary signs less than 32 square feet during the 60 day period before either a primary election or eternal election and the six days afterwards. In most years, as you will note, that's over a third of the year where we really cannot regulate signage. Doesn't matter what it's a political sign or any sign, we cannot regulate it. And that was one of the reasons for making these changes because one, we can't regulate content anyway. And two, we can't regulate any signs during these periods under state statute. So in effect, what this does is basically says, except during the election period, you can have eight square feet of temporary signs. We don't care what the message is. It would be up to the individual owner to make sure that the message is not obscene in any manner under our current law. But this really, you can put any sign you want up as a temporary sign and you have three at the time. So we're not in the point of trying to determine now whether it's a political sign, a commercial sign. It's a temporary sign and it is permitted.
And and was the numbering here changed to back to three where you start with temporary signs or devices meeting the following criteria? That should be number three, right?
Yes, it should be number three. That is a that's a scrupulous error that we will address. Thanks for note, thanks for noting that.
It's easier to number these things appropriately and accurately once you've actually removed all the underlines and cross throughs and all of that, but.
Jackie, if we can go down to prohibited signs, I want to address a couple of things Penny raised earlier today. Basically, we have changed these signs here as well as far as prohibited signs. Portable signs are prohibited. We do not have a provision for that. Animated signs, including digital signs or billboards are prohibited. Temporary signs, again, Penny raised the issue in regard to banner streams, propellers, strong lights and so on. And whether or not this provision would conflict with Christmas and Halloween decorations. And I am unable to load my response to her. But in essence, our definition of sign, I believe, would not include Halloween Halloween or Christmas decorations. We've never regulated those. We've never prohibited those. Number four is a snipe sign. Penny raised a question about what a snipe sign is. It's basically a sign that is illegally placed on a fence, a utility pole in the right of way. So and in essence, we can remove those at will. And typically, we will have the highway department go out and remove those. So if it's not a permitted temporary sign, it would be considered a snipe sign where somebody just randomly chooses an intersection or utility pole to put up a sign. And those can be removed at will without notice. We also specifically prohibit a billboard or outdoor advertising structure, which requires in doctrine bed. And basically, this is the permit that really for a the state requires a billboard for any federal highway, a permit for any outdoor advertising structure for any federal highway. So this is an additional prohibition which supports our prohibition of large signs for along highways. And replaces really the prohibition on off premises signs. Do the commissioners have any other specific questions in regard to the ordinance?
Commissioner Giffens?
And no, I really appreciate how quickly Mr. Wilson got back to me with my questions earlier, so. It's really nice.
Yeah, it's it is technical and it is related to court requirements. And so we appreciate getting this done as quickly as possible. And I know staff worked really quite a lot on a lot of these technicalities and appreciate their hard work. And of course, the members of the plan commission who also helped. Let's see if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this petition. Raise your hand in the Zoom screen. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, see none. Any final comments, Commissioner Giffens?
No, it's just a really dense kind of stuff to go through with all those definitions.
Yeah.
One thing I do want to note is, again, the at the federal court level, this is a very much in flux. There are a number of cases that are pending in the federal district courts, in the Seventh Circuit and other circuits. And I believe one case has been accepted for certiorari before the Supreme Court in regard to a billboard case. So I in saying that, I think you can expect to see us back with additional amendments to make sure that we remain in compliance with the current federal case law.
Yeah, great. I appreciate that comment and that note. We might be coming back and seeing this again very soon. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-23?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate your help, Mr. Wilson. And next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-51 Washington Township Rezone.
I will second that, Ms. Priscilla. If you would provide us the information again, please.
Really, thank you. So this petition is another reason request, it's a zoning map amendment. The property is, so the petitioner is one of the Washington Township Trustee's office. This is this property is 5.5 acres. It's located off of Chambers Pike. So the property is currently zoned pre-existing business and agricultural rural reserve. The petitioners are requesting this rezone with the intent to use site for a rural fire station. So on the left, you can see the current zoning. On the right is a site conditions map. So the aerial imagery is older that the parcel was used for some construction filtering, the construction of I-69. The site is is limited with buildable area and there's a sinkhole to the north. That area that we can see on the image is the main buildable that that, you know, looks disturbed is the main buildable area. It's not a huge area, but the petitioners have a site plan, conceptual site plan that will work and is adequate for the site. So this is pictometry of what the the parcel currently looks like. Just a couple of photos from the staff site visit, so long and narrow. But this is that main buildable area on the property. So the bottom right photo would be looking north and the top left photo would be looking east towards 69. You can't quite see it there. So these are two images of their that conceptual site plan. On the left is kind of an overall view. On the right is the most updated version. Now, I, you know, we recognize this will change. So if this rezone is approved, they will work administratively with planning staff, highway, stormwater to have an approved site plan. We do already know that one of those driveway entrances is not adequate, so there will be some future revisions. But to get the general idea, this is about a 3,600 square foot facility. So not large at all. The petitioner stated at the last commissioner's work session that that 89% of the calls that they receive are EMS related. So they had said that this this facility would be kind of more geared towards EMS response, but they will have fire the fire like response. Will be able to provide that service. So so Plan Commission forwarded a positive recommendation, a favorable recommendation by a vote of eight to zero at the October Plan Commission Meeting. And staff recommends approval of this petition based on the findings of fact. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I just, I would like to add that I was talking with people at the Benton Fire over the weekend and they said we do need more ambulance service, EMS service type things. And so I'm very pleased that that this is being discussed.
I do not have any questions. Is the petitioner, petitioner's representative present to speak on this item? I don't see them in the attendee list, but I'm gonna offer that up. I think it's a wonderful thing to add this fire station. It's going to be, it's just the right place and it's it's located in an ideal place. The sighting is perfect and I appreciate all the work that's gone into getting this together so quickly. And I know they're on a short timeline to try to get things moving this year. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the petition? All right, see none. Any final comments, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank the planning department for their work on this.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-51?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved two to zero.
Right, thank you so much. All right, all right, so we don't have any appointments today. I just have a few announcements. And first is that for folks who are interested, who are targeted for annexation and interested in remonstrating, there is some information available on our websites. You may also want to take advantage of a couple of planned public events as well. So the American Legion Burton Rollery Post 18 and 1800 West Third Street will be hosting tables for remonstrance. And that is from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. today through Friday this week. And also next week, Tuesday through Friday, 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. And all the annexation areas will have representatives present to assist. And both veterans and the general public are welcome. And so great thanks to the American Legion for opening doors for this important public interest event. Also, you may drop by the auditor's office if you have questions or if you wish to remonstrate. And actually, they've set up downstairs in the courthouse. So it's very easy to access the information. Just go into the north door of the courthouse. This is where the ADA parking is, the side of the courthouse, and there's no steps. Right inside the door, you will find a friendly representative from the auditor's office who will be there to give you assistance, to help you out and to help you with the forms and the paperwork. And will help you if you choose to go out and and circulate a petition among your neighbors as well. If you need more information, you may contact the auditor's office or stopmeet an annexation at gmail dot com. Or you may call 812-361-4424. And that's the county residents against annexation phone number. Also, because the governor's order has been extended for another month, the township assistance fund is still active. The Board of Commissioners worked with the county council to provide township assistance funding for residents in our community who have been negatively impacted by COVID-19. Please contact your township trustee. Every county resident has a township trustee, whether they live in a city, town, or neither. And if you need to find your township trustee for your township, please go to call 211 or go to IN211.org for further information, for contact information. Ms. Freeman has graciously included the contact list in our minutes every week as well. So if you want to peruse the minutes, you can find them there as well. Also a reminder that we hold office hours just about every week of the month. When there's a five week month, we we might be not present, but we have this. Every office hour is listed on our county calendar at CO.Monroe.in.us. Just join in and and you may be put in the waiting room if another constituent is present. But just wait and we will be happy to speak with you. But just wait and we will be happy to speak with you about any pending issues or new issues or anything that's concerning you about your Monroe County government. And also a reminder that now it's November to consider applying for boards and commissions. This is really important work. As we can see from today, we have, you know, Plan Commission that's active and we have a redistricting commission that's active, but all of our boards and commissions are active throughout the year. And they do really important work advising Monroe County government. Bring your talent, bring your expertise, bring your time commitment to making Monroe County better and apply for a board or commission for 2022. Please go to co.munro.in.us and you can just insert board commission applications. Or you can look at the list of boards and commissions as well to see the kinds of work that they do and look through their minutes and and get a better sense of what the commitment would be and the scope of the work. So. Again, a big congratulations to Ms. Ridge and Monroe County Highway Department for getting the full million on community crossing grants this year. Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Githens, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Two quick things. I want to remind people that township assistance is available for rent or mortgage. It's also available to help with utilities if that's a problem. And in some instances, I believe even medical payments. So don't hesitate to contact the township trustees. They are there to help you. And they're fabulous people. The other thing is is that this weekend is when you turn your clocks back. So at 2 a.m. on Sunday, or maybe even the night before, it's time to let the time fall back one hour. So just a reminder to everybody.
Yeah, thank you for that. An extra hour of sleep never goes amiss.
But then we pay for it in the spring.
And yeah, and then for those folks who are going to contact your township trustees for help, they also have other resources as well. This is just an additional COVID-related resource that we've been fortunate enough to be able to offer. So grateful for the council for their help with this too. But really, they have other resources too. And and that's where you're gonna find the answers if you're struggling right now. Yep, absolutely. Thank you so much for that. All right, we are not having a work session today. And our next meeting is November the 10th at 10 a.m. right here on Zoom. And again, we appreciate everybody's hard work and commitment to great Monroe County. And don't forget to get vaccinated. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks.